Good morning. This is Luke Revan, manager here at East Brandywine Township. I'm addressing you in my capacity as the online moderator for this work session of the Board of Supervisors. Due to the coronavirus pandemic and to protect the health and safety of township officials and our residents, we're conducting this meeting via webinar. This meeting is being recorded and will be rebroadcast on the township's YouTube channel. Public notice of this meeting was posted on the township's website consistent with Act 15 of 2020. The agenda for this meeting was also posted on the website at ebrandywine.org/AgendaCenter and is visible on your screen. Members of the public can hear us, but your own phones and computer microphones are muted, so we cannot hear you. To enable an organized meeting, you are following the following procedure. As with in-person meetings, I ask that all participants wait to be recognized by the chairman before speaking and that all comments be directed to the chairman. To be recognized, you must first ask me, in my capacity as online moderator, to unmute your audio connection. You may request this at any time via the chat feature located on the left side of the screen. Each person recognized by the chairman should state their name and address before asking a question. I'll now turn the meeting over to Chairman Winters.
Good morning. Welcome to East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisors Work Session, April 1st, 2021. Let's start off the meeting with public comment on agenda items.
Actually, real quick, it is in the agenda, but it's regarding to the minutes from the March 4th meeting, which is in our agenda packet here. There was a vote that occurred in the March 4th meeting regarding litigation and the Resolution 3 of 2021. I don't see the vote, Luke, in the packet. I see the discussion, but I don't see the vote.
On which? On litigation update?
Correct.
Well, okay, so we're on the agenda item for public comment on agenda items. My recommendation is that when we get to the agenda item for approval of the minutes, the minutes of the meeting in question be tabled and give everyone a chance to review and respond to your concern about, yes, minutes. I haven't reviewed the section, but it is required that when a vote is taken, the vote is recorded in the minutes. And if it's not there, that is an oversight that needs to be addressed. So I would recommend when we get to Agenda Item 3 and we table that set of minutes.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. It is on there, though, Kyle. The second paragraph down is the vote. The motion passed two to one. But we can go ahead and move on. We'll talk about that once we get to that section, though. Is there any other public comments, Luke, from the audience or any residents?
No individuals joining us remotely have asked to have their speakers unmuted.
Okay. Well, let's move on then to the minutes of the previous meetings, the Board of Supervisors, March 4th. I believe, Kyle, this is what you're...
Yeah, you're right, Jason. You're right. It does say that. That paragraph is blurred out.
Are you good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Then the minutes of the previous meetings. I so move. Do I have a second? A second. All in favor? Aye. And let's move on then to the managers' report.
Yeah.
Or 18th meeting, I'm sorry. I think we did this as a minutes of March 18th. Was that including the motion? For the approval vote?
I honestly don't recall. Let's, to cover our bases, make a, I'd entertain a second.
I'll make a motion. Yep, I agree, Luke. I'll make a motion that we approve the Board of Supervisors' minutes for the March 4th and March 18th, 2021 meetings.
A second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Thank you, George. Now moving on to the management report, Luke.
Right. So I'm the only person who is on staff and making reports at both your work session and your regular session. It's become the tradition at the regular session to accept the report and not to have the individuals making the report read them aloud. I will either read my report at the board's request or it would be appropriate to have a motion accepting my report.
I'm okay with just accepting the report if it's okay with George and Kyle. I'm okay with it unless there's something that you want to specifically point out that needs to be to know, but I'm reading it right now, so.
Yeah, well, there's one thing that I would like to read aloud, and that is just a thank you to the residents of East Brandywine for participating in our recycle program. Staff has completed the 2020 reporting, and we had a significant increase in participation at the curbside recycle program. And I think that's in no small part due to the fact that we're all getting more boxes through the mail and all having more takeout containers. And I appreciate everyone recycling those items.
I'll make a motion to accept the township manager's report dated April 1st, 2021.
A second. All in favor? Aye. All right. Moving on to old business, the DCED grant for 537 plan update, the reimbursement request number one and extension letter.
Right. Let's start with a little bit of background. The Act 537 sewer facilities plan update is currently been approved by the board for the 30-day public comment period. That ad has not run yet, so we are not in the 30-day comment period just yet. But that's where we are in the approval. After the 30-day comment period, the board will have another chance to adopt a final plan prior to submitting to the Department of Environmental Protection for their review and potentially acceptance. This project is partially grant-funded, and staff is in receipt of a notice from the funding agency that said that the availability of the funds ends at the end of June 2021. I am proposing that we do two things. One, we ask for an extension for an additional year for the total, the completion of the project. And number two, we immediately submit for reimbursement for those portions of expenses that we've incurred that are reimbursable. And that is 50% of our consultant fees less 10% withheld prior to final DEP approval. So before you is a grant reimbursement request for $36,000 and an extension letter seeking an additional year. Both of these documents require multiple parties to execute, therefore I put them on the agenda for the board's consideration.
I think, Kyle, George, do you have any questions or any comments on the extension request for a year as well as the reimbursement for the 50% minus the withholding 10%?
I have no questions.
None.
As far as the, do we have a motion then to accept the reimbursement request extension?
I'll make a motion to accept the DECD grant for the 537 plan reimbursement request and extension letter.
A second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And now moving on to the update of the open space acquisition of parcels 30-3-11 and 30-3-86.
Right. We actually have three very qualified speakers on this agenda item all joining us this morning. Supervisor Winters has been the board liaison for this project. Myself, and we're also joined by Jack Stefferood from the Natural Lands Trust, if there's any questions. Jason, would you like me to do an introduction of how we got to where we are today? Or?
Yeah, sure. If you want to, that's fine.
Okay. Well, in November of 2020, the Board of Supervisors authorized the Fee Simple acquisition of two parcel of land located in the Riparian Buffer for the east branch of the Brandywine Creek. We're going to share a screen that shows some survey parcels. All right. These two parcels had previously been recommended for acquisition using the real estate earned income, I'm sorry, the earned income tax, open space dollars, from our open space committee. The open space committee saw value in the acquisition of these two parcels. The long, narrow parcel that you see is, would be necessary to allow for stream access from the parcel that was conveyed to us by Metropolitan Development Group as part of the Estates of Dallas Forge Development. The wider parcel that you see has land development approval for a single house. And so acquiring that would preserve this sensitive wetland area from future development. We have a bit of a moving goalpost situation here in terms of the exact arrangement for the acquisition of these two parcels. The two parcels are appraised at $341,000. The original proposal was that the county and the state would essentially split the cost with the township being a minor partner to the tune of $25,000. In November, at the time that the board authorized this, the state had withdrawn as a supporter of the project. And the new arrangement was that the cost for acquisition would be split between the county and the township, 50-50 of the appraised valuation. We've now hit one additional snag, and that is that these two parcels show an easement area, an easement area that predates the assessment that was done to determine their value. And Chester County has elected to withhold a portion of their payment for the Fee Simple acquisition of this land equivalent to the value of, or equivalent to the acreage of the area covered in those easements divided by the total assessed valuation, or approximately, it is $8,711.47. So here we are at the board again. I would be asking the board's permission to spend an additional $8,700 in addition to the amount approved in November to acquire these two parcels. That makes the township's total investment $179,211.47.
So, Luke?
Jack or Jason, if I mischaracterized any portion of how we got to here, please feel free to chime in.
No, I think you did a great job explaining the background of this particular parcel and acquisition.
All right. Supervisor Scribner, did you have a question for me?
I do. What was our, in November, when the board approved it, what was the total investment for the, it was, obviously it was much less, but what was the, do you have a dollar figure for exactly the total?
Right. It was half of the appraised valuation. So on escrow, it is $170,500 is on escrow at Admiral Title Search.
So what is open space, what is their input on this?
The last time open space made a recommendation to the board, it was November of last year, and that was to acquire these parcels in fee for half of the appraised valuation partnering with Chester County. There is one distinction between where we are today and what the county or what the open space committee recommended. The open space committee had anticipated that the final Fee Simple ownership of the narrow parcel would be the township and the final Fee Simple ownership of the wider parcel with development potential would be the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. If we go to closing today, the township will be the owner of both parcels in fee.
Yeah, I understand, but I'm shocked that the open space hasn't had any discussion on this since the new fees. I mean, that's a lot of money, another $89,000 that we're throwing in the taxpayers.
Eighty-seven hundred, eighty-seven hundred.
No, no. I'm talking about from when the state backed out. Have they commented since the state backed out?
Yes, they approved the $170,000. Jay was representing the Open Space Commission at that meeting, and he recommended the disbursement of the $170,000 to cover the 50%. And when the county had, would have covered the other 50%, but when the county had wanted to back out the easement area from their contribution, that's where we're at right now, the $8,711 difference. And because we're contractually obligated with the owners of parcels, we're looking to make up the difference now. They've already approved 170, but they have not had, this is something that happened the 11th hour. They didn't have the opportunity to weigh in on the $8,711. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I guess it does. But as I said, it doesn't matter if it's 8,000 or if it's 90,000. I'm just surprised that they have, I mean, I think we should have them weigh in on this. They're, obviously, it's their committee.
Well, the direction that we last heard from them is that they recommended township purchase the Fee Simple.
Is there anybody from the open space committee on the call, Luke?
No, there is not. And I would further say, I take responsibility for not having briefed them in the seven days since our last attempt at closing failed.
But we didn't really have any really knowledge as far as what we're going to be moving forward until Monday. But I'm okay with it. I think that the open space is supportive of it. And I'll make a motion to the township board to disburse the additional $8,711 and some change to 47 cents, I believe, for the, to cover the difference of the acquisition of parcels 30-3-11 and 30-3-86. I will second that motion. All in favor? Aye.
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Luke, for your providing the background of that and the update. Let's move on now to the new business, the scheduling of the conditional use application for 200 Corner Cedge Road.
Yeah, when last this was, it actually probably be under old business. This was discussed at the March 18th meeting of the Board of Supervisors. The basic dilemma here is that there's two timelines described in our code. One timeline for conditional use hearing mandates that the planning commission have access to the materials at least 45 days before hearing. And our code further requires that the applicant is entitled to a hearing 60 days after submitting it. This created a kind of an unusual circumstance where the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Supervisors would be your AM meeting in May, and the 60-day timeline would have expired before your PM meeting in May. When last we left, the board directed staff to seek an extension from the applicant to allow for the hearing to be held at the night meeting that's regularly scheduled in May. The applicant has declined to extend an invitation to the township and is asking for their application to be considered in the 60-day window they're entitled to under our code. So at this time, I'm asking that the board get out their calendars and perhaps consider scheduling a special night meeting to consider this application.
Sure. What do you have in mind?
Well, the 60-day period ends on Saturday, May 15th. So we can't go before the planning commission goes on Wednesday, May 5th. But we can't go after the 60-day period expires on Saturday, May 15th. So that leaves Thursday and Friday, the 6th and 7th, and Monday through Friday, the 10th through the 14th. In terms of existing regularly scheduled night meetings for which we will be using the webinar platform, on the 10th, the open space committee would meet on Friday, the 6th. The trails committee would meet on Tuesday, the 11th. And the historical commission would meet on Wednesday, the 12th. So basically, that's leaving Friday, the 7th, Monday, the 10th, Thursday, the 13th, or Friday, the 14th.
I'm going to be out of town, but I can make it remotely for whatever is going to be best fit for Kyle and for George. I'm flexible.
As am I. Do you want to move the meeting up for the Board of Supervisors? Or do you want to just do two separate meetings? Especially if Jason's away, it makes more sense to do, in my opinion, one meeting.
Well, actually, just from a staff perspective, it'd be my recommendation to have a special meeting to consider the conditional use application. On March 18th, we had a meeting of the Board of Supervisors that was followed by a conditional use application. And while we tried very hard to align the two, it turned out there was like a 45-minute gap between the advertised beginning of the conditional use hearing and the conclusion of the Board of Supervisors meeting. So I don't think that was very respectful of your time. So I'd be inclined just to have a special meeting.
Hey, can I ask a question before we set that date? Why did they decline to grant the extension? You know?
Actually, I didn't make the call, so I'm at a little bit of a disadvantage. I would say it's their right to decline the extension. They're entitled to a hearing within 60 days, so. Whatever their motivation was.
Okay. I didn't know if you knew it. That's fine. That's fine. So I'm okay, Luke, for whatever, if you want to do the evening, if you want to do that Thursday evening, the 13th, or for that Monday, or whatever, whatever is best for staff.
I would recommend Monday, May 10th, at 7:00 PM.
Okay. Is that good? Kyle, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm fine.
George?
Yeah, no, I'm fine. And we will have the planning commission's minutes from that meeting then, right? To be able to review them?
Exactly. That's another problem with trying to, in addition to the fact that your meeting on the 6th is a morning meeting, which doesn't, isn't really conducive to members of the public participating. It would also give staff a whopping eight or so hours over the night to process feedback from the planning commission in the PM of the 5th for your AM on the 6th meeting.
Okay, understood. Okay. That sounds good, Luke. Moving on now to the 2020 audit of the township and pension fund.
Yeah, I'm pleased to report that the township's appointed auditor, BBD LLC, has completed their audits of the township and municipal authority funds for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2020. A condensed presentation will be published in accordance with Section 904 of the Township Code. A complete copy of the audit results is available for inspection at the township office as well as on our website. I posted that last night. The condensed presentation will report that the January 1st, 2020, fund balances of $13,653,781 increased to a December 31 balance of $14,658,119 over the course of the year. Gross debt on December 31st, 2020 was $9,385,000. And the board took action to refinance that debt earlier this year, but incurred no new debt. So that is still a reliable figure for total debt.
All right. Any questions, Kyle, from the audience or George?
I have none.
I have none either.
Thank you, Luke. Moving on, there's no subdivision zoning applications. Then we'll go into ordinance and resolutions for consideration. Resolution 4 of 2021, the terms and conditions of the grant. Funding for Phases 3 and 4 of the Bondsville Mill Park, I believe HUD is here to discuss this with the board.
Morning, everyone, members of the board, Luke and guests. As you know, I am the grant director now, not just the person in charge of applications, but also the administrator for the Bondsville Mill Park County and State Grant support. And, you know, last year, we applied for Phases 3 and 4 grants for both the state and the county. The county came through at 100%, and the state, for some reason, shorted us by roughly $62,000. When I talked to our local representative, Mr. Gilchrist, he basically said, "Well, we needed to ramp up our game somewhat in terms of volunteer hours and make the application a bit more sexy." So Jim and I have been working on that, and this is not a new grant application, so to speak. This is basically coming around for a second bite of the apple based upon what our local administrator told us we should do. So just by point of reference, if you recall, last year, we bid out Phases 1 and 2, the highest bid being $950,000, the lowest being 650. We were able to rebid those. Thank you for allowing us to do that. But the difference was the volunteer hours that we put in to taking care of things like infrastructure, spreading of hardscrabble pathways, et cetera. So the volunteer hours here cannot be underestimated. They number in the thousands per year. I know 250 a week is a minimum for the horticultural, I'm sorry, a month for horticultural. I'm assuming the construction guys are the same. So what you have in front of you is a resolution to allow me to apply again on behalf of the township with no match required by the township, the sum of roughly $62,000. The county has allowed us to continue to use their grant as the 50% match required by the state. So the application is due April 15th, two weeks from today. We're all set to go except for your support embodied in this resolution you now have before you. So I'm hopeful that you'll see fit to sign on to it. We are, as you know, completed Phase 1 onto Phase 2, installation of amended soils. This grant represents the balance of Phases 3 and 4, which is the actual planting of the various native plants. And obviously, the parking lot is critical to allow us to add on parking necessary to accommodate the guests and visitors we expect to have as a result of the completion of this at this point, it looks like mid 2022. So again, thank you for your support. I hope you can see fit to sign on to the resolution.
Hey, HUD.
Kyle.
So I don't know if you've heard the last bit, but the state bailed out on, you know, on their donation or grant to the parcel in East Brandywine on the stream. My question is, now they just bailed on you guys, is, do you know, is this something, is this the same, is Chris Gilchrist the same representative that was in office during both of those?
No, these are different funds, Kyle. These are not open space funds, per se. These are dedicated DCNR funds. So we didn't, we weren't given a grant and then had it taken away. We were not in the position of telling the township, "We had monies lined up and we don't." And in fact, that was my first question to him last year when the pandemic hit. "Are we going to be subject to a pullback?" And he said, "No, these funds are already there. They're not in a budget that can be amended." So no, Drew Gilchrist is not a person that I believe would be involved in the open space aspect of things. He is strictly on grants for township and, you know, municipal improvements. So this is strictly separate funds.
Okay, good.
Hi, this is George. A while ago, I guess we had given okay. for Jimmy Buxala to send out a letter to all those homeowners, you know, along the Bonneville regarding parking.
Yes.
Did you get any reaction from the homeowners? Anything on that?
Yeah, George, we did. Uh, we did receive one letter from a resident who is not somebody we know, but who has two vehicles. And their concern was, well, what happens if I have two vehicles and I'm only getting one dedicated space? And Jim did send a response. I'll have him forward it to the board, and in particular to you, which basically said, well, you know, 95% of the time you'll be able to park it in the existing lot. And if there is a special event coming up, we'll make sure every resident, not just you, gets notice. There are some neighbors that have additional spots. They could obviously park somewhere offsite, close by, and then bring the vehicle back. But that was the only comment. We do know several owners down there. Actually, Jim's cousin, Ed Flag, owns two such units. My, one of my clients owns one of them. But they've all indicated to us that they will add in, and this is a short-term thing, hopefully, add into their lease that the, the parking is by authorization of the township only. It's what I would call a a short-term license that can be revoked at any time. So, but the only feedback was the concern that if you have a special event, what notice are we going to get and where are we going to put our cars? So we haven't heard any response to that correspondence yet, George, but I'll send you the letter that we did get.
Yeah, like, looks like it went over then well. So thanks, Hud, for the update.
Yeah. You're welcome.
Any other questions from the audience, Luke? I'm, I'm okay with, um,
No, I have.
Okay with, um, with Resolution four, 2021, if you guys are, as far as the support.
Okay.
Are you okay?
I'm fine.
Yeah, okay. All right. I'm making a motion for Resolution four, 2021, for the terms and conditions of grant applications for DCD's funding for phases three and four, the amount of the $62,000 as requested from the grant administrator for the Bonneville Mill Committee, Hud Holtz. I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Good to see you back in action, George. Thank you, guys. Take care.
Thank you, Hud.
All right. You're right. Bye-bye.
All right, moving on now to permission to advertise two of 2021, the authorizing execution of a cable franchise agreement between the township and Verizon.
Yeah, this is a, a bit of a throwback. In 2019, the board joined with other municipalities in engaging the Cohen Law Group to negotiate a revised franchise agreement with Verizon Pennsylvania LLC. Did that in conjunction with other county municipalities. And there was considerable savings by renegotiating these contracts or these franchise agreements all at once. Cohen Law Group has finished its work and has provided with us with a number of deliverables that appear in order. Including in your packet are an executive summary of the, the, the changes to the franchise agreement and some background on the environment in which cable operators are working. Included in your packet is a draft advertisement for a resolution. I'm sorry, an ordinance included in your packet is the draft ordinance authorizing the execution of a franchise agreement. And then the last item is the franchise agreement itself. So for today's agenda, I'm asking the board's permission to advertise ordinance two of 2021, which would authorize the execution of a cable franchise agreement between the township and Verizon Pennsylvania LLC.
Okay. So I'll, I'll make a motion to, uh, give staff the okay to advertise regarding the ordinance of a cable franchise agreement between the township and Verizon.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Luke.
Thank you.
Moving on to public comment on non-agent items. Do we have any from the audience?
No one participating remotely has requested for their microphones to be unmuted.
Thank you. Any notices?
Yes, we have twos.
The Chester County Voter Services Board of Elections is holding its new meeting on April 1st at 11:00 AM. Consider deliberate and vote upon our request to change the voting location of East Brandywine Township from the Baptist Church back to the East Brandywine Township. You can call the voter services at the link 610-344-6410, or you can visit their website with a link. And that's the one. The second one is the executive session that follows this meeting for the purposes of personnel matter and potential litigation.
Real quick on that, on that voter services, was that, are they intending to take it from three polling places to two? Is that the, is that the thought?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, so I, last, as, as a provision of the pandemic, the last cycle we had, East Brandywine Township was not a polling station and that, that, those individuals who would have voted here were directed to go to the Baptist church. I, I, my understanding, and, and I think anyone who's interested should tune in and not take it from me. My understanding is that they still want to have two polling stations, but swap the, the, from the Baptist church back to the township building.
But my, I guess my question is, was this, was this a, a recommendation from voter services, or did you know if the, if the church didn't want to be a part of it anymore?
I don't know any backstory, but in as much as, yeah, I mean, it, it, in as much as it's a public meeting and it affects people's polling stations, I thought it was worthwhile to, to draw public attention to this event.
And once again, this is temporary, right? This is just for the next May election, right? But we don't, I guess we'll find out at the Zoom, if it's, goes beyond this. But it's purely a pandemic move, and I think part of it is getting people to work in, during it, so they're putting it all in one location rather than having two sets of polling workers too, but.
And I, I don't mind for the pandemic. I can tell you that I think it did a disservice to the voters for the last election because there was hours of waiting time and a lot of people just bailed on the idea of it. If this is a temporary solution, I'm okay with it. If it's not, I think we need more answers. If it's, if it's a, a permanent, I'm, I'm not okay with it. I think that the residents should, should not be okay with it as well. But I guess, Luke, I think it's important that we find that out because, I mean, it's a very vague statement.
I, I, I don't, I don't disagree. Again, the, the intent here was to raise public awareness, not advocate any particular position. If voter services wants to use the township building, I'm more than happy with the board's approval to facilitate them using our facilities. I mean, I think it's, it's always a good experience hosting a, a polling station here.
But we'll know later on today, because that meeting is this morning.
Yes.
Yes.
Is there anything else, then? Have a motion to adjourn? I'll make a motion to adjourn our meeting.
So moved.
All in favor? Aye, aye.
Aye.
Very much, everyone. Have a great day.